I know there may be a couple more folks coming. So I just want to say that Anne and Lane know this, and David, and a few others, and Lisa might. I'm coming to you from sunny North Carolina in the foothills of the Smokies. I'm here with our three grandchildren. And we also say hi to our daughter and their dad. So it's really the grandchildren that the primary interest here. I'll just be honest with you. Tonight, I'm just going to go into a presentation mode and share with you the agenda. And I sent you an updated one. There we go. One more click. And Kelsey, can you see this agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So I sent you the updated one because I, after I got thinking about the original one, I said it makes sense to put all of the feedback right into the agenda so we don't miss anything. So tonight, we're going to do our best to incorporate the administrative feedback, which is here. And we're going to incorporate the school board feedback, which is here. And if I've missed anything, Lane and Anne, do keep me honest on this. We had very little citizen feedback. I had one yesterday. I finally had three. And all three of them didn't participate in forums and they didn't participate in the survey. Their names were on the list. I just sent the feedback to everyone on the list because I wasn't sure who attended which forum. These were people that you all reached out to. And so we haven't had any feedback positively, negatively, or anything else from citizens. Towards the end of the meeting tonight, I want you to think about who'd like to present the vision, who'd like to present mission, the beliefs, and each of the four priorities. So we'll have seven people, hopefully, that will step forward and be willing to present to the board on June 14th, the final strategic plan. And so, once we get that done, we'll have a hootenanny here, a little celebration from a long January, February, March, April, and May, a five-month, fairly arduous process in pulling together the strategic plan with feedback and input from lots of people. But before I start, I just want to, I want to see if any of you have any thoughts or issues before we jump into it tonight. Anything else that ought to be on the agenda? Anything that I might have missed as we wrap it up tonight? And for some reason, I can't see any of you. So if you have, if you have something, sing out and let me know. Doing okay?
I have just one. All of the information, are we going to still have like the results from the surveys? That's going to still be live somewhere on in the shared drive or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. You own that. You own that. So Tina Scheindl, we'll keep that live as long as you folks want it.
Okay.
Everything will be there. And that's a good question, Anne. Okay. Well, let's take a look at the vision, mission, and beliefs. So I didn't, I didn't hear anything as far as changes to the vision statement. Lane and Anne, did I miss anything? Was there any feedback that any of your folks had on the vision statement?
No, they had a pretty, pretty positive kind of response. A lot of the comments were more kind of about wordsmithing and whatnot, but they thought the spirit and the intent was pretty good.
Okay. Anne, how about the school board?
Sorry, my household is being very loud right now. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to be conscious of that. I don't recall strong, I think there was basically no comment to the vision statement. And mission statement, remember, they were just wondering about just making sure it talked about education. And again, I think it was the concern about making sure knowledge and skills was sort of front and center.
Okay. So I'm going back to the agenda. And this is the, this is the statement. So I'm just going to, for now, I'm going to copy this over. And let us take a look at, is there a way? Whoops, that's kind of tiny. Is there a way that we can wordsmith this a bit to have a stronger linkage with the terms "education" and "learning"? The board didn't think that it was quite as obvious in the mission statement with what it is that we're about. So any thoughts, any wordsmithing here? I'm assuming you can all see this. And again, I can't see you. So Anne, would you facilitate a little bit and just keep me honest here as to, people have their hands up?
Well, and also, when, I'm not sure if we necessarily have to change it. I think, I mean, that was a few people on, actually, I think it was basically one person on the board. So I don't know if that means then you rework the whole thing. I think we can all, I would encourage us all to kind of look at that and think, have we made a strong linkage to education and learning in that mission statement? And if we, if we put our heads together and feel like we've done that, I think we can.
Are there other thoughts?
Well, I mean, we could add, the OSSD is a learning community.
Okay.
I mean, it's a pretty simple fix, and I think might cover the problem or the concern.
Right. David, you're thinking right here?
Yes.
What do design team members think about that?
I like that idea.
Okay. Any other pro or con?
I like that change. I was also thinking, and this might just be too basic, but in front of knowledge, we could always add the word academic, if that might, you know, make, I know we were kind of trying to say that we learn more than just academic, but I don't know if maybe for those board members of having that, you know, their academic knowledge, if that again, might just pull that piece. But I like the learning community as well. I think that's helpful.
Okay.
It's been saying academic learning community.
I'm going to say, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of putting academic in there. I feel like what is education and learning if not developing knowledge and skills? And I feel like that, that I think that just makes it too, it makes it sound like we are just focused on that side of it. So yeah, I'm not a big fan of that change. I don't mind the initial one, though, the learning community one.
Okay.
I would agree that we shouldn't narrow it to academic. I don't, I don't like that there. Anything I would put academic, I mean, if you really wanted to, would be to put it in front of the learn, an academic learning community, because we're in a school, an academic institution, but.
What if we put education in front of knowledge? Better, worse?
I'm seeing lots of shaking heads, well, two or three.
All right. Let me see if I can pull these pieces together, and hopefully, it may not change too much. "The OSSD is a learning, or is a community that empowers students of all backgrounds by promoting academic and personal excellence," and then the rest. I don't know if that'll have to make the other one a second sentence, or it'll screw up the whole flow, but it gets the pieces in there, I think, that people may be looking for. Or it may be screwing things up, you tell me.
By, Lane, by promoting academic and personal what? All right.
And then a two, maybe, to discover and pursue?
How do people think that flows?
Just because I said it doesn't mean people can't disagree. So if you hate it, say so.
Yeah, show me your hands, or maybe, I'm trying to, trying to read faces.
I'm, I'm thinking that really just adding that learning was enough. Honestly, I think it flowed really well. I think we're just, we're just making it muddy.
So do we have some camps with a, maybe a thumbs up with what Richard is saying? Or, okay, yeah, I'm seeing, seeing several, Wilder, is that a thumb up, or is that a, I'm thinking? Okay. All right. So it sounds like maybe we want to put it back the other way, or I don't know if you want to just copy the whole thing and put it back the other way, and we can read it through, we can read the two different ones, and then decide on which one we like?
Can do that.
Just to support, for this, I happened to be on the board meeting when they had it. And what the board, a couple of the board members, I think, were saying was, they had a hard time the way we had it, feeling like it applied to a school. And they were feeling like the mission statement could apply to many different types of organizations. So I think the school boards, the couple of people that voiced it, that was their reason for wanting to see that, just so people kind of have a background for what they were, what their concerns were.
Okay.
I appreciate hearing that, and keeping in mind that the whole purpose of an educational program is to prepare humans for the job field or career, wherever they are. That very last phrase about the purposeful future as successful adults and citizens makes me think, we can't just say we're, I mean, we are more than a school. We're preparing people to be team members and authentic thinkers and so many other things. It's not just about academics.
All right. I think we've got an option one with the only inclusion of learning community here, and option two with learning community and promoting academic and personal excellence. Any changes to that before Anne facilitates a vote?
Okay. So are we ready? Do we want to use the raise hand thing in the, that raise hand thing in the options there at the bottom, or do you want to do thumbs? I think I can see every, is everybody, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11? I have 11 people that I can see.
And we're missing two, so there's 13. So must be missing seeing a couple of other folks, because Lane makes 16.
Yeah.
Although I don't know if Dacey is on tonight.
Well, Orc is on, and there's a couple.
That would make 17.
It says 15 people. All right, so.
That's, that's 15 and counting Winton twice, keep in mind.
Oh, okay.
So we're really at 12. So one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Yeah, so we've got, I can see everybody. So we can do a thumbs up, thumb for which one you want. So for option one, can I see thumbs? Okay. And option two? Okay. So we've got, option one is, got the majority.
Okay. Good. Good deliberation. So we now have a revised mission statement. Thank you very much. And let me just take the option out of this. Okay. Onto beliefs. We had one, one school board member that was very vehement that this was, I don't know if he thought this was the best belief statement, but he thought it ought to be first. And so I arbitrarily moved it from second to first, and that's that all students are continually challenged academically and encouraged to reach the next level of proficiency. And the only other one where there was feedback, board thought that this one didn't flow in the same manner as the other ones. So what's your, what's your pleasure? First of all, are you okay just moving this one from second place to first place? Even though it was only one board member?
I'm seeing thumbs up. I think that's, we're all in agreement.
Okay. Any thoughts around environmental stewardship as a responsibility for all? I don't think they thought it was a bad idea. They just didn't think that it flowed in the same way as the other ones.
Yeah, it's like, the cabinet mentioned the same thing. If you look at all the other ones, there's a nice, you know, there's a noun in there, "all students, all children, all students, 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 educators, and families." There's no noun in there. And I don't know if it's just that pragmatic a change in the wording, or if the, it didn't seem like the concern was about the statement itself. It just didn't seem to fit in with the rest. And I'm not sure if it's that simple a change that might fix it.
I think probably the largest crisis that our kids' generation is going to have to face, it doesn't hurt for it to stand out a little bit.
All right, I'm doing a little wordsmithing here. Tell me if this helps it or hurts it.
I like adding students and staff, because it makes it feel more responsible, to Richard's point. It's an important part of their future, and by calling out specifically students and staff, I feel like highlights it more and puts more directly on them. For some reason, I feel like Anne, the community is just too much, but that's just my two
Okay. All right. Anne, do you want to facilitate a vote?
Sure. So all those in favor of this change, show me your thumbs. Okay, it looks like we're, we're a go with that.
Okay. Great. Anne and/or Lane, any other, any other issues around vision, mission, and beliefs that I might have missed?
In that last, in that last statement, it should be responsibility of, not for.
And under age, David?
We're, no, the environmental stewardship, it'd be the responsibility of, not for.
Okay, got it. Yep. Thank you.
Winton, will you just remind me how, how we came up with these? Was this sort of just drawn from the surveys and the focus groups? Or were these something that you'd seen somewhere else and you've sort of adapted?
Both. I heard it in different conversations with the surveys. I extracted some from comments in the forums and the surveys, and others, these are generally belief statements that got extracted from the North Carolina belief statements. I think some came from the San Francisco University High School, and I think there was a Colorado model in there that we borrowed some from. So it's amalgamation from a variety of sources.
Great, awesome. I was just curious.
So I'm just going back to the agenda to see if there was some other action steps, major goals, emphasis, middle school, proficiency. Yeah, we took care of that one. Actually, I'm just going to pull that right out of there, because we've already done it. And we've already done this one. Actually, I'm going to leave those in, because when I do the minutes, I'm going to, I'm going to recognize that issue. All right. Well, I think, I think we're in good shape. So we're going to call this the 517, vision, mission, and beliefs. And that's locked in. Any, any last thoughts here before I go to the goals?
I'm not seeing any waving hands.
Okay. Here's the, here's, here's the tough one. I changed this title back to 517. Initially, I had it as 518, so I could differentiate it. I deleted the 517, and this is the new evolving draft. We've got quite a bit of feedback here, and I agree with a lot of the feedback. There are a lot of goals here. And research shows that four or five goals are kind of the max that you can be successful with. So here's what I'm, what I'm going to advocate here. We're not going to delete any, but I think we ought to do some prioritization. And here's what I'm, what I'm thinking. Not only are there a lot of goals, but a lot of goals to do in three years. The other strategic planning process that I'm facilitating, they're developing a five-year plan. And I think, given the number of, the amount of feedback we heard from the forums, what we heard from the surveys, and 23 goals, we're going to be a lot more successful if we parse out the start and completion timeframe into a five-year plan. And the other thing that I think, given what I'm hearing from board and administrators, we ought to prioritize and rank order goals, so that if there's some that have a lower priority, that, in a sense, we're giving permission for the high priority goals to get the primary focus. And it doesn't mean that the administrative team, or the teachers, or staff aren't going to do those. But I, I'm worried, and administrators are also worried, that if it's too many, it's going to water down the effort to be able to accomplish them and feel like we're not just spinning wheels. So I'd like to hear what you have to say about this, and then we'll, then we'll pursue what to do about it. And the last thing I'll just say, we do have four main priorities. And the first one, as you know, is school culture and climate. And that's what the board asked us to study for middle school and high school. The second one is communication and relationship building. That emerged from the forums. The third is the foundational knowledge. That's what you've been working on from the last strategic plan. And the fourth one is personal development skills. And that was partially identified in your last strategic plan, but highly emphasized in the feedback that we heard. So if we said that the, if the four main priorities or theme areas were those, then maybe that, that's kind of the high-level focus here. What we do with the goals that are under each, I'm going to, I'm going to advocate that, and I'm not going to be able to finish it in front of your eyes tonight, but I'd just like to put a number here, as we look under each priority area, what seems to be the most important? And Anne, I'm going to, I'm going to rely on you to manage our votes tonight, if that's where we go. But before we do, what, what do you think about that?
I mean, I think the document looks really overwhelming right now, and that it definitely would be helpful to take some goals out. I mean, I don't have advice on which ones right now, but.
Okay. Thank you. I think that was Kelsey?
It was Haley. My sister's name is Haley, but.
Okay. All right. Other thoughts?
I have to say, I agree. Both on a, we're asking the school then fall back on this and do evaluations. That could be pretty exhausting, or it's hard if you've made a little progress in each area. Does that mean you've succeeded or not succeeded? So I think probably paring them down, and I think basing it to some degree, if we can, off of the things that came up the most in some of the meetings and stuff, would be great.
Okay. All right. Other, other, other ideas, feedback, thoughts?
I'm wondering if when we prioritize, there may have to be some compromise between the things that are super important, but at the same time, what's, what's actually achievable, or what's actually going to have the biggest impact? So it doesn't feel to us and to the school board and the community like we're just reinventing the wheel and doing the same old, same old. So I just, I feel like we've got to be, we're going to pare these down, we're going to be really intelligent about how we do it, and what kind of impact these goals will have.
Okay. I'm liking what I'm hearing.
One of the other things that Anne had brought up about the school board was maybe just looking at, and this might be kind of even like what Richard's saying, is the measurability of some of the goals. Like we talked about, some of the goals were sort of really open-ended, and so the ability, so some of what we might need to look at is, what are the things that can really produce at least some degree of data, whether it's, you know, however that's broadened. But I think that, that gives measurable ability for the school board to be able to respond to.
Okay. Good, good thought. Do any of you have some ideas about how we might tonight go about doing this?
I'm just looking at one of them in front of me here. It just happens to be the one in front of me. But there are some of these that we are, we are actively pursuing at the moment. And I'm not saying we're doing them perfectly because we're not. But the one I'm looking at is clearly articulate all assessments and each content area and grade level and use data to inform teaching practices. So that's not, we are not uniformly perfect at that across the board. But it's certainly something that all of us are striving to do all the time. So maybe, yeah, maybe we should be looking at the goals where it's, it's one of those ones where we're going, well, we haven't actually put much focus into the, into this. Because that one I'm looking at right there, we've definitely put a lot of focus into that.
Okay. Let me do this. Let me make a second copy here. Because I don't want to lose any of the kind of minutia. Because Lane and the administrative cabinet may like to rely on the more in-depth work. And, and the board in policy governance world may want to have only the ends focus. So I'm going to, I'm going to change what I said earlier. And I'm going to, I'm going to re, I'm going to make a copy. And I'm going to call this one, well, I'm going to, Lane, what, what would you like this to be called so we can differentiate? Well, I'm, I'm in the wrong thing here.
You could probably call it prioritized. Right? Prioritize goal matrix. Because like I said, it's that all the goals are actually really, really good. There's just a lot of them. And so, you know, if we can figure out, hey, these are the first five or six to work on. And we hammer away at them until we've got them up to whatever benchmark we set as, as being where we want them to be. We know that once we hit those benchmarks consistently for a little while and the work that's happening to maintain them becomes a part of culture, then we kind of move on to, you know, another one.
Okay. So I'm going to call it prioritized goals. And that's the one that we're going to work on now. And let me make it a little bit larger here. All right. Got it. Do you want to start from the top? Or would it be helpful for you all just to at your computers, go through and, and put a number for each goal? Don't worry about action steps right now. Just number your goals. And then we'll come back together and, and do a little chip trading here to see where the consensus is under each of these priorities. Does that make sense as a, as a strategy to help us move forward?
Did you just share this doc with us so that we can do that? Or, because the one that was shared earlier today says it's in the owner's trash and I can't, like, it doesn't seem productive to work in that one.
Okay. There we go. Coming at you. Thank you. Let me know, Anne, when you can see this. All right. Wilder's got it.
I'm going to, I'm going to rely on, on those that deal with Google more than I do. Because I'm still trying to get, get to my Google. So it should be in the shared drive, right?
Yeah.
Shared with me?
Yes.
Anne, I put it in the chat just now to link to it if that's quicker.
Kelsey, can you see it?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Anne, just to do a thumbs up to make sure the majority of folks can see this now.
Okay. Do we have thumbs up for folks? Everyone is, Dave, you got it? Yeah, you got it. Okay. James, you got it? Yep. Okay. So I'm the one who's got to figure out how to get it.
I can see it. Should I make a copy in order to type my priority numbers? Or am I supposed to make notes in a note?
Do it, write it, do it as maybe a side note or, let me think what the best way to do it.
We can't type in the document, I don't think.
You should be able to.
Can we just, can we just take notes? Are we going to discuss it?
Yeah. Just take side notes, I guess, maybe.
I'm just going to write mine on a piece of paper and then be able to share.
Yep, that makes sense. So the, the plan, let's just take one priority at a time. Under school culture and climate, go through and rank order, I guess there's only three. Four. There are four goals, one through four, rank order, school culture and climate. Only under the goal itself. Yep. And let Anne know with a thumbs up when you, when you've completed that.
Sorry, we're numbering them based off of which we think is most important?
Yes. Number one is most important to you. Number four is least important to you. Don't worry about the action steps or benchmarks. I'll, maybe I'll work with Lane offline just to refine those. And I think Richard's comment about if it's stuff we're already doing and won't have substantial new impact, consider that as well.
So Wynton, are you wanting us to do one, one
Yeah.
area at a time?
Yes, just do the four, four goals under school culture and climate. So it would be this, this first column. And folks, let, let Anne know with a thumbs up either physically or in your, in your technology that you finished that. And then we'll have a conversation.
Um, for most people. Almost all there. Even and David, are you ready? Yep. Okay, we're good to go.
All right. So I'm going to ask you to, I guess, share. What's the easiest way? How, how many of you had number one for this one?
Raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Four?
Four.
All right. How many of you had number one for this one?
Closing the gap.
Wait, I think you're showing the, a different one than I read. Maybe I read the wrong one?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no. I'm showing, I'm showing you the wrong one.
Okay. I was like, wow, I really messed that one up.
No, I really messed that one up. So we had four on number one. How many on number two?
Two, three, four. Four on number two.
Yeah. How many number ones did, were there on this one?
Three, four, up.
Okay.
This is really hard because I feel like all three of these are super important. I don't know.
Okay. Well, the other way we can do it is we can do an amalgamation of all of your votes for each one, and the low score gives us our highest priority. Maybe that's the best way to do it. So we had four number ones. How many number twos did you have on the first one?
One, two, three, four. Is that, is that a, is that a hand, Lisa? No. One, two, three, four. Yes, it is. Five.
Five. Okay. Okay. All right. How many had threes?
One.
Okay. And any fours on this one? None?
None.
Okay. So we've got a total of 10. Again, low score wins. On the next one, we had four number ones. And number twos?
One, two, three, four, five. Wait, one, two, three, four, five. Yes, five.
Okay. And number threes?
One, two.
And any fours here?
Sorry, I should have been the number two there. Sorry.
You had a number two?
Yeah, sorry. I forgot to raise my hand.
Okay. So we've got 12 here. Last chance.
Wait, but the other one we didn't have, we're missing some people. 12. We have 12 votes. The first one, we only got 10 votes.
Okay. Who are we missing on the first one here?
I didn't vote on that one because there was the first one. That, that's, for me, that's just a given. It's just what you do. If that makes sense. The other thing is that just adding up the number of votes, the way that we're doing it, right, since everybody's voting as a one, two, three, or four, you're always going to have this, you should always have the same total technically. So there is a way to weight them, you know, fours are worth one, you know, fives are worth two, you know, five times two, one times three. There's a way to do a weight damage, which I can do for you if you want me to in the morning after we got the numbers.
Okay. Yep, that'd be good. So what you're saying, yeah, that makes sense. So if I record them like this, Lane, then you'll, you and I can work this on tomorrow?
Yeah, I can throw it in a spreadsheet and probably figure it out in about, about 10, 15 minutes. Not a biggie.
Okay.
But Lane, you, you've got to put your, your vote in there for the first one.
Yeah.
If you're going to put me in on the first one, I'll, like I said, I'll put that as a four just because, like I said, it's what we do every day anyway. That's our primary, primary work.
So that would be five for number one.
Got it.
Wait, one for number one.
Okay. So we're still missing somebody.
Do we want to redo, why don't we just, how many people had a number, had it, had it for number one? Let me see hands. One, two, three.
Wait, had what for number one?
The access to the learning environment and materials and resources.
Right here.
Well, that's the given.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got one, two, three. David, you had your four. Five for me. Okay, five. That makes five.
Five ones?
Five ones, five twos.
Okay.
One, three, and one, four. Does that, does that ring true to everybody? You see there in there somewhere?
Okay.
So we still have 12 every time we, we.
Yeah. Got it. And we've got it here. Everybody must, should have, should have weighed in. So we've got 12, but Lane's going to do the
Weighted.
Weighted voting. Okay? All right. Right now, we've got three number ones. About, how many number twos?
One. One number two. Oh, is that you, David? Up, two number twos. Sorry.
Okay. We'll get better at this as we're moving forward here. How many number threes?
One, two, three, four, five, six, including myself.
Okay. And there is nine, 11. We were missing one, so it must be.
One number four.
I put it in. I forgot to vote.
Okay.
I just fixed it.
All right. All right, good. That's what we like. So we've got 12. Thank you. And then how about to evaluate ongoing building needs, so on and so forth? How many number ones?
No number ones.
Okay, how many number twos?
No number twos.
Number threes?
No number threes. Oh, we got one, number three.
Okay. Got it. And number four?
11 number fours.
Okay. Now, this is actually starting to percolate. Got it. So there's our 12. All right. So you've got the, the gist of how we're going to do this. And again, I'll, I'll shift once Lane gives me the prioritization. As I'll go through and redo the, the action steps, benchmarks, so on and so forth. As, as we move forward, what are your thoughts about changing this to either a four or five-year strategic plan? Or do you still want it to be three? Any pros and cons?
What exactly is your plan once you get the weighted information? Are you planning to keep all of them? Or are you planning to get rid of the bottom two or three? Because I guess to me, that would make a difference based on how many goals are left as to the recommendation.
Well, let me shift that back to the administrators, Lane, Lisa, and David. What are your thoughts on what makes sense for the implementation of the plan? Is it better to have fewer and go three years? Does it make sense to go four or five and include some of these, but start the implementation in year two, three, or even four?
I'm fine either way. I just, as long as there's some sort of caveat on there that recognizes that, you know, as we're working, we might find out that it's, some of them aren't possible in three. I mean, there are some that are going to require the entire faculty working towards it. And again, we only have so many PD professional development days each year that we can do some of the more concentrated work and whatnot. And so those will take a little bit longer. But it's, it's hard. I always have a hard time estimating times. So it's, it's hard for me to say. Like I said, I'm fine either way. I just, I think there needs to just be a caveat that if we're working effectively on the priorities, that people understand that, you know, we might communicate that we need more time and we can give and we can give a rationale for why.
Okay. Uh, Lisa, David, any, uh, any additional thoughts here before we make a group decision?
Yeah, I agree with what, what Lane just said. It's really hard to anticipate, um, exactly what the timeline will look like. I think as long as we're working toward these goals, that's what makes the most sense.
David, any additional ideas?
Well, I mean, not really. I, 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 I think they're goals and I think that they're all important and, and, um, I hate to have, if it's a five-year plan, I, it, it puts us out so far before you stop and look at it. I mean, unless it's like, I, I, I think it should be looked at in three years.
Okay. Lisa, are you a, a three-year, four-year, or five-year, uh, person?
I, I mean, I think you regularly evaluate your progress toward your goals, so I would hope we were looking at it sooner than whatever the end time was. Um, so I, I don't have a firm, um, a firm sort of thought about it. I mean, I think we'll make, we'll make the plan and do the best we can to meet the goals. Um, but yeah, so I don't, I don't have.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the three versus five. Um, again, it's kind of interesting. I'm actually with, with the understanding that it might not be possible to get some done in three, right? Especially if we're focusing on the, the, the priority ones first. But I think that three-year mark, to go along with what David said, may be important because the whole heck of a lot, as we've just discovered, can change in the world in three or four years. And it might not be bad, um, at the three-year mark to just kind of reevaluate, you know, are these still, you know, what's been accomplished, what hasn't been accomplished, and what hasn't been accomplished? Which ones are still priorities, given how the world has changed in the last three or four years?
Good point.
You know, that, that's a, that's a worthy conversation to have.
Yeah. And what, uh, what do you think, where, what is the, uh, as you represent the board, where's the board on this?
I would say, um, again, because the board is looking for the broader, um, accomplishments.
Yeah.
Um, and the, even the way we monitor, it allows for, uh, a benchmark, but then also a, a rationale or an, or a, a reasonable, reasonable interpretation of why we may not necessarily be where we wanted to be at that point. I think, you know, sometimes, as Lane pointed out, things come up. Or you get into a plan and you start working towards something and you realize, you know what, this isn't working. And, and the board doesn't, we don't want the administration to feel compelled to finish something if it's not working. We want the educators to be able to be making their decisions based on what's happening in the world of education and what research is telling them and what the world, how the world is changing and influencing what results need to be happening for kids. So from the board perspective, I don't want to tie them into any super tight, uh, you must do this because as, as they're going along, if they figure out that this isn't the, you know, this isn't working or, uh, it's not having the results we intended, we need to adjust things. I, I would, I'd like to keep it at three and then they can kind of read, adjust as, as they go along.
Okay. Well, let us move forward then and re-answer to, I don't know if it was Gus or whoever, uh, asked that question. Uh, let's keep it as a three-year focus and, uh, the ideal plan is at the end of year one, if something's accomplished, then we s, we recognize that and we always keep a three-year plan in front of us. So year one goes away, maybe we pick up one of the lower priorities in the next three-year window and we keep ratcheting forward. We we eliminate goals that are accomplished and prioritize the new ones. But let us keep it for now as a three-year plan. And so with that in mind, let's move to the second priority. Uh, second theme here, which is communication and relationship building. Uh, take a moment, go through. You've got one, two. You've only got two to prioritize here, so this one will be a little bit faster.
I do wonder with this one went, went in, if we could kind of combine them? And, I mean, you can't have good communication about curriculum and learning if you're not having good communication. So I wonder.
Oh, good point.
We don't need to vote on this one and maybe, maybe we can just prioritize the top one and then this, the other one could co, would come after anyways or would come with the first one anyways. If that makes sense.
It does. And you want to run a thumbs up on Kel, I think that was Kelsey.
That, no, that was Kayla again. Um.
Kayla.
Or no, Haley, sorry.
Haley.
All right.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, so we're gonna vote on I, sorry, I was reading, I was reading the two. You caught me not paying attention or not listening clearly, so, um.
Do you want me to re-explain?
I think that
Either one of you.
I think I heard Haley, whoever was speaking, uh, say that we're prioritizing improved two-way communications between families and schools is number one. And Haley, did I get it right? Communicate curriculum, learning outcomes to families and communities is number two? Is that what you were advocating?
Yeah, I was just saying that if you're doing the first one, then you're kind of doing the second one or it's gonna come after your set, setup, good communication, then you would then be communicating maybe more about academics. But it's kind of, that's what you're communicating about, so, um, it's kind of.
Okay.
Right. And now, now this, this is Kelsey this time. Um, and it, I agree with that. And also I feel like the communicate curriculum is kind of a, an action step, right? That that's part of what you're talking to the families about, so making that just, this kind of the sub-bullet or act, the next column over.
Oh, okay.
I agree with Haley on that and just adding that to the action step instead.
Uh, Haley, would you, uh, in Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, would you accept that, that amendment, so to say?
She gave that.
I think that's a great idea.
All right. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna take it out of here. Uh, I'll put it, for now, I'll just put it here. And I'll take the two off and we've got a prioritized goal. Uh, Anne, why don't you take a vote on that and just make sure that that's the consensus of, of our team?
Okay. I'm looking for thumbs. And it looks like it's a majority. Got it? Yep.
Beautiful. All right. Now, this one's gonna be a little bit harder. Foundational knowledge is our third priority and theme. And you've got one, two, you've got a lot. Three, four, five, six, seven. Ah-ha. Well, any merges and acquisitions? Are there any, uh, that you would see us merging, uh, before we vote? Or do you want to just let the vote tell us, uh, what's gonna happen here?
I feel like the bottom three are the same. Uh, they're all about raising the standard of proficiency in the two S-Packs and the Vermont Science, um, assessment.
All right, say that again, Richard.
The bottom three, I feel, are exactly the same. They're just tackling three different topics. They're, um, improving our scores in the S-Packs and in the Vermont, uh, Science Assessment. So to my mind, that, they're essentially the same goal and it's something that we do. Uh, it's like Lane said earlier, it's one of those ones that's a given. We're always trying to do that.
So, uh, if I change some language here, number of students achieving, uh, achieving proficiency, in other words, taking out. Well, I don't know though. Hmm. Lane, I'm gonna defer this to you because, uh, these were very specific in your end report to the board. And also, Anne, uh, how do you want to handle this?
There, um, I understand, uh, exactly, you know, what's being said, what Richard's saying, it's, um, the three. I'm actually okay with that, uh, because we've done a significant amount of work on it already. Um, there's a lot that'll be flowing into it next year. Um, so I'm not as concerned about that one as being as massive as it looks just because of the amount of work that's already been done. Um, and I kind of get what Richard's saying about the three of them together. Um, but again, combined together, it is a tremendous amount of work in total, so.
So it's English, language arts, math.
Yeah, math and, and science, yeah.
And my question with that goes all the way back to the very first, um, category about closing the academic gap. Like, I always kind of thought that was very, like, similar to, to that too and why it was kind of spread so far apart from that goal.
Okay.
You could achieve though, that goal, part of that goal, and then not the other part. I mean, like, you could achieve proficiency in the English Language Arts, but not in math or the other science. The other science one that's now deleted that I, we don't take in first grade. Um, you know what I mean? So maybe leaving them separate. Uh, I don't know. Okay.
Well, you could leave them separate, but you vote on them as one priority, right? Because it's really about academic achievement and the foundational knowledge base.
Um, yeah. And, and Lane and I can tinker with, uh, what's here in the action steps. But for tonight's purpose, let's just, just consider this is one, one now of what, nine, Richard? Does that take us to nine?
I believe that brings us to ten.
Ten, okay. Any, any other merges and acquisitions here before we vote? What about this one? Is that encompassed by what we just did below?
No, because we don't take the S back, but in below grade three.
Yeah, track, track my progress.
Okay. All right. I guess you've got ten to vote on. So go to, to it, one through, one through, through ten under foundational knowledge. Give Anne a thumbs up when you're, uh, when you're done. If you're gonna say any bad words, keep your mic off. Because I know this is a lot of slogging on this one. The last one won't be as bad.
If I only had nine total. I might have missed one.
Okay.
Me too.
Oh, oh, wait, no.
Yeah, I forgot the board, the board one on the, is the very first one. That's the one I forgot.
Yeah, that one.
That ended up being my ten.
Yeah. Well, it's not, it shouldn't be.
Well, there's, there's a logic behind these ones in that there are some things that we have to do because the state and the nation require us legally to do. And then there's a progression of them. You can't do, even though number five may be a higher priority, you can't do number five until you've done one, two, three, and four, when I was looking through them.
Okay. Give Anne a thumbs up when you're done.
Okay. Uh-oh, I'm not seeing people. My internet was being funky. Did everybody put their names in or am I no longer seeing faces in the videos? Are you still all on video and I'm, and my internet's tweaking out?
Yes, we are still on video.
Oh dear. I'm gonna have to see raised hands then. Is it, is everybody done? Can you, can you, um, oh, I can see Lindsay now. Sorry, my internet must be, uh, I can see Lane. All right, so is everybody ready?
I'm seeing some thumbs up.
All right, everybody's coming back to me. Sorry. I'm on wifi, I tried to switch to my cable and it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. So stuck with wifi, which is sometimes not so great.
Is everyone ready?
Is everybody ready? I'm, David White, are you, are you there?
I'm ready.
All right.
Okay.
David's ready. Okay.
All right. Let's go to uh, how many number ones on number one?
Zero.
Can you just read a couple key words of each one? That would be great because that's what I wrote down in the notes.
Ensure school board ends policies aligned with community priorities.
Zero ones. Maybe start with how many ones? Zero.
How many, how, how many ones? Zero?
Yeah.
Okay. How many, how many twos?
Zero. Zero.
How many threes?
Zero.
Fours?
Zero. Five?
Fives?
Zero. Six? Zero. Seven? Oh, oh, we've got it. Was it five or six, Richard?
We're on six.
Oh, six. He, so we have one for number six. Oh, two for number six? Two for number six. I feel like a option here. Seven? Uh-oh. Just heard my daughter in the other room. Or my internet's going out.
All right. Who would like to take over in case Anne goes down?
Have a volunteer?
Lane, you want to take over?
Oh, I'm here, and Lisa, Lisa's willing.
Lisa, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. Um, how many number sevens? Any number eights? We've got one eight. Any number nines? I see two or three. Lindsay, was that, no? Okay, so two number nines? And how many number tens? Seven.
Got it, okay. Going to implement research-based instructional strategies in all classrooms. Take it away, Lisa.
Okay. How many number ones for research-based strategies in all classrooms? Okay, I see one, two, three, four, five, six. How many people rank this as your number two priority for this category? We have one. Any number threes? We have two number threes. Any number fours? Fives? Any, no, sorry, that's zero number fours. Any number fives? Zero number fives? Any number sixes? Okay, so we have two number sixes. Any number sevens? We have one number seven. Any number eights? Okay, that should, any number nines?
Was that zero, zero eights?
Zero eights, yep.
Okay.
And we should add up to 12 already. What Lane said is accurate. Everybody's voted, so we don't have to go further. All right. Um, moving on to complete a detailed assessment framework. How many people ranked this as your number one? Zero. Number two? We have one. Okay, number three? Zero. Number four? We have two. Number five? We have four. Um, number six? We have two. Number seven? Zero. Number eight? We have three.
I think that's our 12.
That's our 12.
Yep.
Okay, so we now have 12. Thank you. Moving on to vertically and horizontally aligned curriculum. How many people rank that as your number one? If one? Um, anyone rank that as your number two? We have three. Anyone rank that as your number three? We have five. Does anyone rank that as your number four? Number zero for number four. Does anyone rank it as number five? We have two for number five. Does anyone rank it as number six? Were you a nine?
Mine's five.
Yours was five also, Wilder, so we have three number fives, and that gets us to 12.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so we are moving on now to, um. I'm sorry.
Effectively utilize technology to enhance student learning in all classrooms.
Yep. How many people? Yep, rank that as number one? Okay, zero. Number two? We have one. Number three? We have zero. Number four? I put number four there. So one. Anybody have number five? We also have one. Um, number six? We have four. Um, number seven? One, two. We have two for number seven. Any number eights? We have one. Number nine? We have two. Anyone for number 10 on that one? Zero. Okay, thank you. Um, all students meet literacy and math standards by grade three. Did anybody prioritize this as their number one? Okay, we have one. Did anybody prioritize it as number two? We have three. Anybody prioritize it as number three? We have one. Number four? We have three. Number five? We have one. Number six? Zero. Number seven? We have one. Number eight? Zero. Number nine? We have two. And number 10? We have zero. I didn't do my math as well. Um, so the next.
Personal learning plans, yep.
So did anybody rank personal learning plans as number one? Okay, we have one. Number two? Number three? So we have zero for number two, and we have two for number three. Number four? We have one for, two for number four. Number five? Number six?
How many for five?
Zero.
Okay.
Number six? Zero. Number seven? I had, so we have four for number seven. Number eight? We have two. Number nine? Zero. And number 10? We have one. Yeah, the next one is about exposure to middle and high school students to career fields, career clusters through guidance, the Innovation Center, and pre-tech. Um, so who listed that as their number one? Zero. Number two? We have one. Number three? We have two. Number four? We have zero. Number five? We have one. Number six? We have one. Number seven? We have one. Number eight? We have two. Number nine? We have three, four, four. Okay? And number 10? Zero number 10s. Um, and then next, we have decreasing the number of IEPs and students as a percentage of the overall population. Um, so how many people prioritize this as number one? We have zero. Number two? Two. Number three? Zero. Number four? Zero. Number five? One. Number six? Zero. Number seven? Two. Three. Three. Okay, number eight? We have two. Number nine? We have two. And number 10? We have two. Okay, increase the number of students achieving proficiency through ELA, math, and science standards. Um, how many people prioritize this as number one? Um, so we have three. Number two? We have one. Number three? Zero. Number four? We have four. Number five? We have one. Number six? We have one. Number seven? We have zero. Number eight? One. Number nine? Zero. And number 10? We have one. And that's our whole list, I think.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
So we've got about six minutes left. Uh, if you'd go through, I think there's six under personal development skills. So go through one, one through six there, and we'll add them quickly. Give Lisa a thumbs up when you're, when you're ready.
Seems like most people are ready with these six. Anybody ready? Okay. Um, so for aligning emotional, um, social emotional learning standards for students across grades, everybody who prioritized this as number one, please show with a raised hand or thumbs up. Okay, so that's two. Any number twos? We have one. Oh, sorry, two. Two number twos. Number threes? We have three. Fours? One. Five. One. And six. We have two. Okay, moving on to increasing mental health supports. Who ranked this number one? Maybe one? Five. Number two? We have two. Number three? We have two. Number four? We have one. Number five? Zero. Number six? We have one. Thank you. Um, the next one is related to age-appropriate wellness breaks for students. So please raise your hand if you prioritize this number one. Your number one priority in this category. We have zero. Number two? Okay, number three, or we have one number two? Number three? We have one number three. Number four? We have three number fours. Number five? We have three number fives. Four number fives. And any number sixes?
Mine was for number six, sorry.
Oh, yours was, okay, so we have three number fives and four number sixes. Thank you, Wilder. All right. Um, the next one is increasing student ownership and personal learning. How many people rank this as your top priority in this category? Okay, we have two. Okay, number twos? We have two, three, three number twos. Number threes? We have one number three. Number four? We have three number fours. Number fives? We have three. And number six? We have zero. All right, students expand their development of critical thinking skills. Any top priorities for anyone? Is this, anyone's number one? We have one. Okay, number two? We have three. Number three? Five? Number four? We have two. Number five? We have one. And number six? Zero. Okay?
Sorry, Lisa, I missed you on that one. I was a number one.
Okay, so we have two number ones. Great. Um, the last one in this category is related to basic financial literacy and life skills before graduation. Did anyone give this a number one? We have zero for number one. Number two? We have one for number two. Number three? Zero. Number four? One, two. Two number fours. Number five? We have four number fives and number six. Five number sixes.
Beautiful. Okay. I think we are good. So what I'm gonna do is just ask of how you'd like to present. Lane and I, likely David and Lisa, may do a little editing. We'll try to keep it as coherent as it is now and make sure that the goals, the action steps, the benchmarks line up, the years, we parse those, those out. Uh, who would like to, uh, present the vision to the board? This will be our last work of, of tonight. Uh, when we do this, a lot of you are gonna have a role. Uh, we're gonna have a vision, a mission, beliefs, and then we're gonna have the four. Uh, we're gonna have a vision, a mission, beliefs, and then we're gonna have the four theme priorities. So we're gonna have seven roles. Uh, who would like to present the vision and just a little bit about kind of how we got to this point?
Can you first clarify? The agenda says it's on the June 14th. It also says it's on June 24th.
Okay, good point. Lane, I think it's, and Anne, isn't it the 14th?
Yeah, he can't see us.
Second Monday in June. Second Monday in June.
So it's the, it's the 14th. Good catch. Uh, who would like to present the vision? Any takers?
I'll do it, just to get things going. It's David.
Is that David?
Yeah.
Okay, who'd like to do the mission?
I can do the mission, that's Lisa.
Okay, yep. Beliefs?
I can do beliefs.
Help me to know who it is.
Haley will do beliefs.
Kayla?
Haley.
Haley? Haley. Got it, okay. Who would like to do theme priority one? That's the culture.
You can throw me in on anything that other people don't want to do.
Okay. Priority two?
This is Lindsay, I can do that.
And priority three?
I can do that, this is Lisa.
Okay. And priority four? That's personal development. Again, there's not much to this, you just present what the goals are and talk a bit about maybe how we got to those, or maybe just the highlights. Any person, uh, willing to do the personal development?
Sure, I can do that one.
And who is that?
Kelsey.
Beautiful. All right, well, we have come to the magic time. And the magic time is, I think I, I think I'm in presentation mode. Uh, we have completed our work, folks. It's, uh, it was a long process. Uh, I really liked tonight because we had more participation, uh, from everyone because, uh, y'all had to vote on each of them, so it was quite nice, uh, to have the engagement tonight. But I want to sincerely thank you very much on behalf of the school board, on behalf of the administration. Uh, I very much enjoyed working with you all. And I just have to share with you as I bid you adieu, I'm going on a fishing charter on a 15-mile lake tomorrow that, the half of it runs through North Carolina and the other half through Georgia. So if you never see me again, then an alligator got me, or, or water moccasin. Uh, but if you do, then it was a successful fishing trip. So, thank you very, very much. And we'll be in touch and see you on June 14th. I'd love to have you all there, just so that the board can recognize, uh, your good work. With that, have a good rest of the evening. Take care. Bye now.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have fun on your trip.
I will.